I'll call this meeting in orders. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and also for those who have passed away in our community. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third Order 3A, Minutes of the Human Relations Commission Meeting Held August 23rd, 2019. 3B, Minutes of the Human Relations Commission Meeting Held September 30th, 2021. 3C, Minutes of the Human Relations Commission Emergency Meeting Held via Zoom on November 18th, 2021. 3D, Correspondence Received May 3rd, 2022, from Kaylee Paculski, City HR Director, Regarding Position Updates As of April 2022. 3E, Minutes of the Civil Service Commission Meeting Held April 5th, 2022. 3F, Minutes of the Scranton Redevelopment Authority Regular Meeting Held April 6th, 2022. 3G, Single Tax Office City Funds Distributed Comparison Report, 2021-2022, Year-to-Date, April 29th, 2022.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items?
Yes, I have a comment. Question came up in caucus from Councilman Schuster regarding the Humans Relation Commission, and that there was a complaint received, and that was why an emergency meeting was held, and that's for item 3C. And it appears that that complaint was then sent to the State Commission. So I would like to request some additional information. It doesn't appear that they've met since then, so perhaps we could get information on when they plan for another meeting, if they're planning on trainings for the commissioners. I understand that there might be some new commissioners, and I believe they need to be trained first to be able to investigate complaints, and perhaps that's why this was sent to the State Commission, but I don't want to make assumptions. So, Mr. Volenberg, if we could please get some clarity and some updates on the Human Relations Commission, I appreciate that.
I'll reach out to them, Dr. Rothschild.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments on the third order items? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have two quick ones. So this Saturday, May 14th, the Westside Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts of 250 out of St. Anne's will have their annual pasta dinner. It'll be at the St. Anne's food stand. Takeout only, from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. It's $10, so they wish that we'd please stop by and support these young men. And then second, I think Mr. King mentioned this last week, I'm going to mention it again. So this Saturday, at Naog Park, it's going to be, the event is hosted by the Junior League of Scranton. They're going to host a Touch a Truck event at Naog. It's Saturday, it's Saturday, May 14th, from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m. I think it's going to be a blast. I know my grandson, he's all about trucks now, so this will be, this will be a great event. And that is all I have.
Do any other council members have announcements at this time?
Just briefly. A number of citizens have come up to me recently about people putting their garbage cans out either well before the 24-hour. The ordinance, I believe, indicates that you should put out your trash cans no more than 24 hours before pickup, and then within that 24 hours, make sure that you put them back behind your house, what have you. I actually had a constituent send me numerous pictures of a lot of people just leaving their garbage cans out in front of their homes for days, and I actually witnessed that at a few places as well. So I just want to remind everyone about that ordinance. So we're all, you know, try to take care of our properties, and we take pride in our city, so just a reminder about that. And also, now that it's getting warmer out, there's a lot of people out walking, a lot of people out running, jogging, riding bikes, just all over the place around town, and it's great where everybody's finally able to get outside. I just want to remind everyone, and I think at times we're all guilty of this, to just slow down a little bit and be aware of our surroundings, and understand that there's a lot of people out now that the weather is good, and just please be careful so that everybody stays safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other announcements?
Yeah, I had two. The Green Ridge Neighborhood Association reached out to council, I think yesterday, and they had a couple announcements that they wanted us to put out. There's a cleanup at Pretzel Park on June 4th that's going from 9:00 till noon, and it's going to be part of the City of Scranton Pride, as well as a fundraiser they're going to have on May 22nd, from noon to 5:00 at Andy Gavin's. The cost is $25 per person. They did make a couple other requests for signs and things like that, and an address to be looked into by city inspectors, but I'll send that over to you, Frank. But yeah, Pretzel Park Cleanup, June 4th, 9:00 to noon, and fundraiser for the Green Ridge Neighborhood Association on May 22nd, from 2:00 to 5:00.
Do any other council members have announcements at this time?
I had one. I just wanted to plug the greenhouse project over in Naog Park. They are doing their spring flower sale, so they have plenty of plants available inside the greenhouse. I was there over the weekend and was able to pick up some potted plants, because I'm too lazy to pot them myself, but feel free to stop by. They are usually open Thursdays through Saturdays, 10:00 to 2:00 for the month of May.
Thank you. I have a few. Just a reminder, next week's regularly scheduled council meeting for Tuesday, May 17th, has been rescheduled to Monday, May 16th, at 6:30 due to primary election day. And just a reminder, City Hall is closed on Tuesday, May 17th. Another one I have is Pen Paper and Supply Company is going to be celebrating its 100th anniversary celebration. They're going to have ribbon-cutting ceremony and a light reception on Friday, May 20th, at Pen Paper. Scranton Office, which is at 2:15 Vine Street, and that starts at 12:00 noon. Also, the Scranton Dunmore Fraternal Order of Police is holding a Heroes Helping Heroes Golf Tournament on Monday, June 6th, at Mount Airy. All proceeds benefit the Geno Merly Veterans Center Resident Welfare Fund. The Resident Welfare Fund is used solely for the residents of the Geno Merly Veterans Center. Anyone who's interested could reach out to the Geno Merly Volunteer Services Resource Coordinator, Janice McAllister, at 570-961-4380. And that's all I have. Mr. Volenberg?
Fourth Order, Citizens' Participation.
First on the list this evening is Joan Hoda-Wanitz.
Joan Hoda-Wanitz, Scranton. Today's May 10th. It is Day 130. Thirty-six percent of the year is gone, and how do we stand on union contract negotiations?
To the best my knowledge, negotiations are still ongoing.
Did I hear correctly in the past that negotiations did not begin until this year after the contracts had expired?
That was the information that was sent to us.
There might have been some, maybe one or two preliminary, or early bird, they refer to them sometimes as negotiations. There might have been one meeting in June that I'm aware of, but that's all I have.
Well, when can we expect to see some written information coming down in third order on status? Is that coming in the near future?
So we did get the dates in which negotiations were held. We're hoping to put that in third order for next week, and we also discussed in caucus about the billing from the Labor Council as it relates to activity in the first three months of the year.
Well, I hope so, because we're not asking what did they discuss. We're asking when they met. Because this administration, like many of its predecessors, has a systemic problem with keeping on top of coming events. How many times do we see emergency certificates? Oh, here comes the insurance policy, it's got to be renewed, and oh, we've got to do it, because in two days, we'll have no insurance. This happens again, and again, and again. There's such a thing called a suspense file, there's something called backward planning, and I don't know why the administration can't do that. We're not talking having a degree in finance, or IT, or anything else. This is common sense planning, and I'm a little tired of it. Which brings to me another point. Three weeks from now is May 31st. According to the Home Rule Charter, that's when the audit for 2021 is due. Is the city even working on it?
We have requested an update, or I have requested an update on the audit for 2021, and I haven't received anything back yet, but once I do, I'll report that to you.
Well, I'll give it a hand. I think it's time to start putting in right-to-no requests. This is unacceptable. You cannot say you support transparency and full disclosure, and then when requests for information as simple as this is made, it's nil-hurd. Is this what the taxpayers are paying for? Is this monopoly money time again? I'm tired of it. Also, last several weeks, and even months, a lot of grants have been coming through council, and I don't know who's doing all the grant writing, but I do think that whoever is doing it, you should be complimented. I've seen one name, Sherri Frabel. Is she the head honcho?
I believe so, but I believe there is another one as well.
Okay, well, whoever is doing it, I think that's commendable. The only thing I would request is when OECD in particular puts out its legislative backup sheets that go into, that go in with the legislation in fifth order, they need to be a little bit more specific. As you discussed in the caucus this afternoon, the NOSAMEN Agreement for Federal Government Affairs Services, 5C, it's $4,000 per month. Doesn't say how many months. Didn't say specifically where the money was coming from. It said city funding. Now, you said you think it's the business administration.
I was told it's professional services under business administration.
But what I'm saying is, these legislative sheets, those are common sense questions. Okay, you don't need an MBA to be able to do that, because it's happening time and time again. I get up here and I say I need more information. And I'm happy about the money for repairing City Hall, 5B, but I remind you, it won't make a bit of difference if the city does not have a long-term maintenance plan, or you'll just be digging another hole. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Ron Elman.
Hello, council. I know that the property owners had to see the new water and waste hikes, $35 a month, was their estimate. My electricity is up about $30 a month. My gas budget went up $35 a month. My house insurance, $44 a month. That's about $150 a month. This year, that I didn't have last year, that's what, $1,800 a year? That's not just me, that's everybody. Everybody's not going to have as much money, because what do you think? I believe it's because our governor gave the utilities a card of blank just to do what they wish. This been going up, and up, and up. You know, everybody's complaining and saying they're going to do something about gas. They can't lower the gas. The gas tax is what's paying for the road and bridges, and now we're getting the electric cars that aren't paid for nothing. I happen to know a friend that's got an electric car. I forget what it was, it's a General Motors. He's very displeased with it. He says, when you turn out everything, you don't get nearly 300 miles. He said, when it's a couple years old, they told him he'd need battery replacements, which would be almost what the car's worth. Now, the city is going to end up with that. Who's going to repair these things? And they're far from being perfected. It takes some experts to work on electric cars, because I've, you know, I've read my car books I get from everybody. Even this new Cadillac's a joke. I don't know people. How can you people out there and listening, how can you just keep allowing this to happen to us? Up, and up, and up, and taking everything away from us? You know, I spend a lot of money on things. I buy apples for the deer that are down there. They've gone up twice as much. I buy a pound of peanuts, oh, I don't know, like five pounds of peanuts, six, eight pounds of peanuts a week, three, four bags. I spend a lot of money foolishly, but gee, the expenses for a common person like me are just gotten out of hand. It doesn't make sense. I dropped the dish, and I can afford to keep it. Two and a half years ago, I signed the deal for two years for 80-something dollars. Nothing changed. I didn't add or subtract. My last bill was $192, and I can bring it and show it to you if you think I'm making it up. So I dropped it. I got a rotor thing that gets everything that I need, and I miss it, but I feel like a chump paying 190. That's $2,000 a year to watch television. And I really don't watch it that much. I can go down to the tourist club, watch their television, it does just as easy. What are we going to do, you know? The city's not, last week, you talked about Naog. What happened to the budget money to fix Naog? There's a jewel for the city going to pot. Where's the budget money to do work there? That bridge under, got plywood holding it together, our ministers are laying there, and I love that place. It's sad. What's the money being spent on? I don't know. I told you all that I'm about through. Somebody keyed my car a couple weeks ago. I don't know, I imagine it's my big mouth up here, but that was the last straw. Last summer, I gave Billy Grippel $2,000 to get my dent, my drinking dent out of it and everything else. Now it's keyed.
Thank you, Mr. Elman.
And I blame it for what I say up here. And Kyle, I got one thing. Patience and fortitude conquer all things, don't they?
They do.
I saw that on a milk carton years ago in San Francisco, I remembered it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elman. Next is, next on the list is Frank Dubus.
Good evening. I didn't come here with the intention of speaking, so I don't really have a platform or something to say, but let me try. I grew up in Jessup, and I graduated the University of Scranton in 1975. In 1975, my dad put me on a bus to New York City. I had never been there before, and I worked there for 42 years, and I had a great career. And then I retired. And I came back and I decided that I want to get to know Scranton again. And although I still live in Connecticut, I maintain a residence on Laclle One Avenue in Scranton, so I'm here quite a bit. Several years ago, I was walking down Cedar Avenue, in particular, the 700 block, and I saw a for-sale sign on a piece of property there, an empty lot. And I called the real estate agent, he came over immediately. I ended up buying the lot, and I ended up talking to the people in the neighborhood, and I found it to be a very vibrant and a wonderful neighborhood, the Cedar Avenue neighborhood. The people are nice, there are a lot of immigrants, and they're, some of them are refugees, they're just nice people. So I created a not-for-profit, and I donated the lot to the not-for-profit. And this morning, we started building a community garden on that lot. And it's a small lot, but it's going to be a community garden that I think, I hope that you will be proud of. I'm very happy with the partnership with regards to the city that I've had in getting this through. And there's some LSA money involved, there's a lot of private money involved in it as well, but the city has been a wonderful partner, and I'd really like to thank the city, okay, for the way they have responded to what I consider to be reasonable requests. This community garden is going to be unique in that it's going to take the shape of a maze. You might consider, you know, typical community gardens where you see, like, let's say, boxes or people. Well, this is going to be a place where a mom or dad could take their child or children, they could be five or six years old, and they will be able to walk, you might want to consider it something like Follow the Yellow Brick Road. And they will be able to walk in a maze right through the entire thing. They will make some mistakes, because in a maze, you make wrong turns, but they will be guided back in a way that they will eventually come back to their parents. And they may go through corn, they may go through lettuce, they may go through a number of things, but the beds themselves will be raised 16 and 1/2 inches high, so they can't really get in trouble. So I don't have much else to say, other than the fact that I do enjoy the support that I've received from the city. It's been a welcome, after being away for 42 years, it's been a welcome trip to be back here, our experience to be back here. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your contribution and your interest in the city, we appreciate it. That exhausts the sign-in sheet for tonight. Would anyone else like to address council?
Members of council, Tom Coyne Menucha. First, I'd like to question, put up a question for fifth order. I had requested prior that the city had hired a health, that we know the city had hired a three-year health coordinator, and being 130 days into that health coordinator doing the position, it would be nice to get an update from that job position of health coordinator, at least bullet points of what they've been involved in and what benefit they have to the city. Because eventually, if we're going to continue this, we are mandated to go back to the suppliers of that fund and supply them with the information of how they have actually supported and been beneficial to the city.
I had given that update when I met with Dr. Saxtona recently. Were you looking for something written from her?
Just some bullet points of what she's actually done, and could you address that in fifth order, please, because I do have a few things. I am troubled. First, I circled back to the DUI of Officer Doherty. I asked if he or the other officer was arrested for the DUI, was still on duty, or, and I was informed that they were on duty and awaiting return of the blood test. I'm not sure if that is still correct, but I assume that is. This brings me back to an oath sworn under Title 53. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and that I will discharge my duties of office with fidelity. It was disclosed in the paper, on the breath test, the officer was three times the legal limit, as reported, but that lacks clarity. The call went out looking for the car, and a Dunmore officer was in Scranton for an unrelated incident, heard the general lookout call. He spotted the car, and was not, not only was the officer crossing lines on Green Ridge Street, but he came to a halt at the red light, fully in the opposite lane, head-on-head with the Dunmore police officer, and then, as the red light changed, maneuvered around him. That may be disturbing enough that the officer was not suspended, but the comment from the Dunmore officer is just as disturbing. The officer stated, he was placed in an uncomfortable position. Funny how it's an uncomfortable position when it's only police pulling over police, that it's not an uncomfortable position when it's a police officer pulling over a regular citizen. Also disturbing, as he was pulled over by a, in Scranton, by a Dunmore officer who was assisting, and the case was transferred to the Scranton Police Department. I would have figured the Dunmore police office might have been the right place, because this is a direct conflict of interest, but no. On a second issue, prior to this, we had a mayor pulled out and charged by a federal officer because of federal hidden deals that have always been an issue. But we are not devoid of this. I have reached out for clarity on the trash fee and received double talk. We are not following the law. We are aware we are not, but we can't talk about it because of legal challenges, so we will continue to violate the law in direct negligence. I have reached out about the participants of the meetings related to the rescue plan, one-on-one, community members, and 45 to 60 community stakeholders. I asked a simple question, who were these people attending the meeting? But it seems the city needs 30 days to know who attended those meetings. In the land of open working records and clarity, I seem to be running into closed doors, locked city halls, and records that somehow do not exist. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coyne. Would anyone else like to address council this evening?
Good evening, council. Darwin Shaw, Scranton resident. Wow. I didn't know a lot of things that were going on, but there is good news, Mr. Donahue. Congratulations on your position that you were deciding to run in. I do have an issue, though, I do have an issue. On Beach Street and Dunley Court, there are little children that play, and there are "Watch Children Playing" signs there that are spray painted over. I was just wondering, there would be a possibility that if not big infrastructure could get done, like the roads, traffic lights, things like that, at least could we get the signs fixed pertaining to children playing around anywhere in Scranton?
Is that the 400 of Beach?
Yes, yes, thank you. Also, number- Also, number two. Mister, um, this is the new city solicitor, if you don't mind, because when I was here during the caucus, there hasn't been a discussion in the past about legalizing fentanyl test strips. And you can't give legal counsel. You're not allowed to. But I am going to ask a question. You don't have to answer it or not. Is it possible, is it illegal for local law? Does local law supersede federal government, federal law?
So...
Does local law...
I, I could actually answer that, because we had, so we were gonna, we were gonna actually, we were looking in, about a year ago, six months ago, we were looking at legalizing fentanyl test strips in coordination with the District Attorney's Office.
Yes.
But when our previous solicitor looked into it, state law preempts any local law.
Thanks.
So state law is still, um...
Higher.
Is higher.
Yeah.
So what, what the resolution that we discussed in caucus that should be coming down would be in support of, and I don't have the Senate bill or House bill on top of my head, but in support of a Senate bill and a House bill that decriminalizes fentanyl test strips statewide.
Wonderful. Yeah, wonderful, wonderful. Wow, wonderful, yes, yes. Number three. Flood mitigation has been a big problem in Scranton, Pennsylvania. I am born and raised in Scranton, preferably if we're going to look from the top-down East Mountain. I was a child that attended Friendship House, and they helped. Thank you again, too, for accepting their application for them expanding their resources, especially to the citizens of Scranton. It is, it is a good thing. Can we do something about flood mitigation? Instead of kicking the can down the road for the next ten years, could it be handled properly? Because we are borrowing a lot of money, and it is not proper that the city itself, not city council, the administration, the executive administration, will put out a survey and ask the citizens what we want, preferably pertaining to what my platform revolved around when I ran for mayor, the roads, utilities, safety for the children. And the citizens said what they wanted, and we're still going with the administration decides. That is not listening to the voice of the people. That is ignoring the people and honestly utilizing your power in an unfair manner. And I would like to know if there is anything that I can do as a citizen to help. Who do I need to complain to? Who do I need to talk to, to get this ball rolling? Because East Mountain alone has been going through those problems for a long time with the sewer lines, you know, the flood mitigation, the fact that our sewer drainage does not hold a hundred-year storm. They don't even hold a twenty-year storm. The, the pipes are too small, and we are lacking proper funding, and I do understand that. But it is not okay for us to act like we're billionaires because we are getting grant money that is actual borrowed money, and we don't have the ability to perform natural revenue with only our citizens. And it is not cool that within the next few years, it looks like the property tax base is going to expand by twenty-five percent. That is not okay, especially for inflation, and citizens now struggle to feed their family. I would like if something can happen with the Mayor's Tax Policy Group, Mr. Dunnehu, if you can put the feet to the fire, because you are going to be the state representative. And I am, I am going to step down, not only as a citizen and as well as a father, because it's a beautiful thing to, to grow as a person and in your community, and I want to start here. I don't want to be the mayor. I don't want to do none of that. I'm going to start here, and then I'll grow where I need to grow, but I want to fix home first. So please, could we concentrate on flood mitigation, helping the citizens in the summer? Because if there's nothing to do for the kids, if there's nothing for the children to do, there's, crime is going to go, crime is going to go up. And it's not, it's not, it's not family sustainable or safe anymore, because everybody, everybody is working hard. And for us to go backwards due to individuals not wanting to get proper documentation, or individuals want to think that their authority outstands others, it's not okay anymore, because the mayor and the council work as a joint unison. They are. So you have exactly the same amount of power that she does, so it's time for you guys to command, not command, but ask in a positive manner for the proper documentations that you need, and she must give them to you, or we're going to have a bigger problem, because I am going to run for counsel.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Shaw. Appreciate it. Would anyone else like to address counsel this evening?
Good evening, counsel. Dave Dobson. Okay. I would just ask people to realize that we're kind of at the mercy of the federal government and when they're going to come up with the money for this. And, uh, in a lot of instances, cities were built with very little consideration of flood control, and now the problem's gotten. Chickens are coming home to roost, but I think the mayor is doing a fine job right now. And last week, we had a little sermon on Supreme Court decisions. So I brought back a letter. Comments were made about the mayor and certain council members attending Planned Parenthood rallies. My opinion is that the USA should have introduced family planning globally fifty years ago, all willing to participate. There's been consternation about doing that for years. We're still not allowed to do that. And I have heard estimates of two billion people could live on a Western standard of living without severe environmental degradation. Many of these same commentators expressed opposition to social programs and spending to sustain you as citizens in time of need. We had trade packs starting in the eighties. They gutted industries all over the valley and all over the country. Now we have supply line problems. Whoop-dee. What was wrong with, when it was in our backyard? I have supported free choice and personal responsibility on my life. People should not be required to put up with intrusion into their personal lives by the government at the behest of others' religious fervor. These issues have no place in a constitutional democracy. Regressive legislation, disenfranchisement, incarceration, and ethnic cleansing are often the final result. Over the years, I have seen the same individuals comment on many issues that are not their legitimate concern. The Fourteenth and Fifteenth Amendment to the Bill of Rights have ensured free choice in matters of social nature. We need not return to 1859. I have had my own issues with these people, and, uh, well, I'll skip that part. My suggestion is that they should accept the will of the voter and mind their business. In Colorado, the state instituted a broad avail of birth control and eliminated fifty-five percent of all unplanned pregnancies and sixty-five percent of all abortions. Excuse me if life taught me at sixty-eight years that half a loaf is better than none. It appears that some people love their imaginary reality, but no goodwill, goodwill prevail. And on studying this, Judge Alito on the recent leaked, uh, went back to Sir Edward Cook back in the fifteen forties, and he was instrumental in witch trials and the death penalty for witch trials. And what kind of crazy people do we have in the Supreme Court? The only reason you have religious freedom in this country is because we have a secular constitution. Jerry Falwell, Moral Majority, he was a segregationist in the fifties. Segregation now, then, and forever. Republicans. As far as inflation is concerned, all I expect from them, if they get back in power, is to yell in my face that I'm an ingrate and I should shut up. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson. Would anyone else like to address counsel this evening? Mr. Waldenberg?
Fifth order, five A motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments this evening?
Excuse me. In reference to Mr. Shaw's discussion about stormwater, I know that we had our ARPA presentation recently with Answer. Thirty-four percent of the ARPA funds, so we're getting sixty-eight million dollars. Thirty-four percent of that is going towards stormwater, which is about twenty-three million one hundred and twenty thousand, um, dollars to remediate the stormwater issues throughout the city. So hopefully, that will hit a large portion of what we've all been experiencing, not only on East Mountain, but on West Mountain and the Hill Section, and actually throughout the entire city. It's, it needs to be addressed. So I just wanted to point that out. And I have something later about five C also. Thank you.
Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
Only one comment. Green Ridge Neighborhood Association sent over an address of eleven oh seven Woodlawn Street. If we could have city inspectors check out that address, saying property maintenance is poor, rodents, things like that. So if we could send over that address to them. That's all.
Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I have two comments. First, I wanted to thank Mr. DuVos for coming and saying a few words about the Garden of Cedar and updating us on the progress there. I think it was some time ago that I attended a groundbreaking ceremony, and I know that things take time for, for grants and for planning, and I'm happy to see that, that work is being done there now, and it's something that the community will be able to take enjoyment in. I'd love to bring my daughter sometime and see her walking through, through the maze there and getting to teach her about the different things that are growing there. And then, second, I wanted to address something that Mr. Coyne brought up about the public health coordinator. Back in February, I had met with Dr. Saxena and then provided an update during a council meeting on what we had discussed, and I know there are a number of activities planned for the springtime, some public health fairs that the city was participating in. So I'm happy to ask her again for, for an update, perhaps something written, or maybe at some point if, if there's the desire from counsel to have her come in for a caucus to explain the activities of her office. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCandrick, do you have any motions or comments?
Well, I have a couple of comments that I want to report out on questions that I posed last week to the administration. So one of them was a question I asked a couple of times in the past two years. Do we have an employee handbook? All right? So I remember a year ago, a year and a half ago, we're working on it, and that was a former HR director. So I received an answer that the new HR director is working on them. So I, I hope they get done. And then aligned with that question, I said, well, you know, within the handbook, we'd have information that would answer other questions that are posed to me. So last week, I asked about an FMLA policy, the city's policy, not the, the federal policy that, you know, we have to follow. So the response I got is, "The city has no formal city policy. Rather, we follow federal rules and regulations," which, of course, they have to, or everybody does. But we believe that our practice should be culled into an actual policy. So I'm hoping they're, they're creating a policy for that. It would be embedded in the handbook when that ever happens. And also, while I was asking that question, I asked another question I asked the past two years. I asked if, because the past two years, in the proposed budgets were received from administration, there was large raises based on performance. That's what we were told. You know, we didn't agree on them raises, but they were based on performance, and I asked a question, "Well, are employees evaluated? Are any employees in the city put through a formal evaluation process yearly?" And I was told, "No." All right. That they were going to start that process. So I reiterated that question and sent it over, and I got a response. The, the response I got is not the answer I'm looking for, so I'm going to have to go back and ask again, but here's the response I got. "Employee evaluations are not policy." All right, well, they should be, right? "And are handled by respective department heads with input from HR directors as needed." So my question is, are they being done? This is two years in a row I'm asking the question. Are yearly evaluations, formal evaluations, being done of employees? So could you please ask that question again, or pose that question, just for clarification? Are they occurring? Because this, this doesn't answer my question that they are occurring, because I was told last year they would do it this year. So, you know, we're well into the year. I just like some clarification. I don't need to know who's not doing them, because they're saying the department heads are supposed to do them. I just want to know if they're, if they're actually being done. Simple question, if I can get that answered. Thank you very much. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have two things tonight. Last week, we did bring up an email, I believe we all received regarding a petition for permit parking on the fifteen-hundred block of Pine Street. That petition was approved, and permit parking does qualify for the fifteen-hundred block of Pine. So they'll be working with, the police department will be working with DPW and the residents to get those signs up for the permit parking. There was also a request for a stop sign on the thirteen-hundred block of Pine as it meets Taylor Avenue. That request was denied. The SPD traffic officer stated that that was not warranted in that position. And I did get one complaint this week. Mr. Waldenberg, if you could pass on to DPW regarding a drainage pipe on Mulkey and East Locust. I guess DPW went out and fixed the pipe, but where the water flows out from, there's a lot of overgrowth there that's in the city right away, and so the water's not properly funneling down the mountain. If we could send that along to DPW.
I will, sir.
And that's all I have for this evening.
Five B for introduction, a resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to apply for and execute a grant for the redevelopment assistance capital program through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Office of the Budget in the amount of one million five hundred thousand dollars. If the application is successful, accepting and dispersing the grant and coordinating the use of the grant funds for the project to be named the Scranton Municipal Building Renovation Project.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item five B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Five C for introduction, a resolution authorizing the mayor, Office of Economic and Community Development officials, and other appropriate city officials for the city of Scranton to execute and enter into an agreement with NOSAM and LLP to provide federal government affairs services.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item five C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, similar to Mrs. Hodawon, it's, I was reviewing that as well, and I was thinking the same thing. Where, so where's the funding coming from? And you indicated earlier that it's coming from, what, the professional services?
Yes.
Correct?
In the VA's office.
But there's other things, like, how long are we expected to work with this team?
So just a couple of questions that did come up in caucus that I am going to pass along. One was, what is the length of the contract? Do they get a percentage of what's brought in, or just that, that monthly fee? And when is the actual start date for the contract?
Right, and when, okay, yeah, I guess, is there, is there an end date to it?
I, I believe it was two years, but, but I, that, I am going to check on that, too. I, I don't remember if that was just conveyed to me, or if I saw that in the legislation.
And, and once, you know, whether they're successful, is that it? Then they've done their job and we move on with the funding, or is, is it the plan to continue to work with them after that, or?
I think it's just, you know, see what, what happens and see what they're able to bring in additionally in terms of federal money, especially with some of the infrastructure money coming up.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate if we can get some of those answers.
Is anyone else, anyone else on the question?
On the question, I had, I had asked those questions in caucus as well, and I, I do agree with the suggestion to have some more of that information in the legislative cover, cover sheet, because to look through, you know, a hundred, a hundred and fifty pages and a backup in a lengthy contract, it is difficult to find that information, so it might be in there, but I, I had trouble finding it. So I would like to know what the length of the contract is, and so in future legislation, if we can have that included right up front, then that, I think, would be helpful for the public and for us. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question?
Yeah, I shared a concern I had, and, and you addressed it, Mr. President Dunnehu, which I'm glad, is, you know, is when people get grants, a lot of
which I'm glad, is, you know, is when people get grants, a lot of times they get a percentage. I mean, that $4,000 a month doesn't sound like a lot. I mean, it's money we probably don't have, or I understand that, but, you know, in their backup, they're like, well, we got $10 million here, $20 million there. So, and then, so we don't know how long the contract is. We need clarity for that. And like Councilman King said, what happens at the end? I would like to see a report card, obviously, and see if it's money well spent and they're going to do what they say they're going to do.
Anyone else on the question?
Yeah, so in addition to all the questions that the other members have raised, which I had myself coming into this, could we please get some examples of possible actions that this company would do to justify the $48,000 we would spend per year? And another thing I did mention in counsel, or in caucus, I always worry about additions to the budget. I feel like, you know, we're looking at a death from 1,000 cuts. You know, we're trying to keep the budget a suitable size, yet, you know, we're getting some new positions, we're getting some new raises, and then, you know, like this one here, it's an addition to the budget. I think we have to take all of these things together and just watch how much we're adding to the budget. So I think getting a few examples of what kinds of actions this company can do that we can't complete in-house that would justify this money would be also helpful with this legislation.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question?
On the question, I just had two things to add. In the backup from the firm, they did include that they would be willing to provide counsel and the administration with regular quarterly updates or more frequent if we needed that. So I would be interested if this is voted on and they're hired, that we would be able to receive those updates on their activities. And I believe the second thing that I wanted to say was that this may have come out because the infrastructure bill and the funding that a lot of cities like ours will be competing for on a federal level, and it would be helpful for us to have a lobbying firm to help us to get those funds. So I'm not sure, I don't know what the long-term plan is for this company. I would like to know that, too, but I think that's where this is stemming from, the anticipation of those funds and being able to compete for them. Thank you.
Thank you. I just, you know, I think they were all good points brought up, but I'd just like to add that, you know, if we're able to spend $40,000 to bring in an additional $5, $6 million a year, I think that's money well spent. But I think we do need to explore the questions that were asked, and hopefully we can get answers for those for next week.
That's also what I was going to say, President Dunne. If we can make sure that we're adding a time constraint on this, so we do get it prior to 7th Order.
Yes. Anyone else on the question? All in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5D for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the fiscal year 2023 funding application by the city of Scranton through the House Appropriations Subcommittee on Transportation, Housing and Urban Development, and Related Agencies Highway Infrastructure Program for up to $2 million for the Pittston Avenue Infrastructure Streetscape Project.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5E for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for a grant for the purposes of the Lackawanna River Heritage Trail City of Scranton Bridge Project.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5F for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to fiscal year 2023 appropriations through the Burn Justice Assistant Grant Account for up to $4,150,599.48 to provide technology, equipment, and services to the Scranton Police Department.
All those in favor of introduction, or at this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question. On the question, I know one piece of equipment that I believe will have to be replaced in the coming years is the police body cameras. So I believe this will be a grant that could be used for that. The police body cameras the city currently has are more first generation, where newer generation ones that, and they actually require to be turned on and off. The newer generation ones will actually automatically turn on anytime an officer either unholsters their weapon, unholsters their taser. So there is, you know, more safeguards on that front. So I'm happy to support this, to give the police department the resources they need to do their job safely and effectively. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5G for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the grant in the amount of $1,000 awarded by Lackawanna County for an electronics recycling event.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5H for introduction, a resolution authorizing the mayor, Office of Economic and Community Development, and other appropriate city officials for the city of Scranton to execute and enter into a contract with Chaluski Enterprises LLC to provide improvements to McLean Park, Page 3.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5H be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file to council number 12, 2022, approving the intermunicipal transfer of a restaurant liquor license R.15376, currently owned by the estate of George Chirkin, Wanda C. Chirkin Administrator, 326 Hill Street, Jessup, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 18434, Two Clarkies, located 850 Providence Road, Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 18508, as required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6A pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, I make a motion to table item 6A.
Hold on.
Sorry.
No, we got to, so we vote on it first.
All right, sorry.
Okay. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Okay, now I would like to make a motion to table item 6A.
Second.
There is a motion on the floor and a second to table item 6A. This ordinance is being tabled until a public hearing can be held next Monday, May 16. On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, file to council number 11, 2022, creating and establishing special city account number, as noted, entitled Finance Director for the receipt of and dispersment of grant monies from the Willery Foundation and Lackawanna College for payment of the new finance director position for the city of Scranton.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final vote on item 7A.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
No.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
No.
Mr. Dunneham?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, resolution number 67, 2022, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials for the city of Scranton to execute and enter into an agreement with Matthew Domins to provide financial director services to the city of Scranton.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final vote on item 7B.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
No.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
No.
Mr. Dunneham?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, resolution number 68, 2022, supporting the Pennsylvania Commission for the United States Semi-Quincentennial America 250 PA.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunneham?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, resolution number 69, 2022, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton to take all necessary actions to implement the American Rescue Plan Act grant funds in the amount of $68,746,050.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, when looking at the project coding here that we have for the ARP spending plan, we have proposed project allocations and actual costs. Each of these is going to come down before council, before they're finally approved, item by item?
So each contract is going to come down, the, and then the, any grants in there, like the requirements for the grant are going to also come down?
Okay. And anything that we've put grants for, you know, we have proposed spending here with some grant matches, things like that. If we don't get the approval for the grants, are we going to reconsider some of these items?
So I believe everything in here that is put down as a match, we've already received that grant. You know, but I think if we do receive more grants down the road, you know, some of this funding could shift.
Okay. Are any of these items, you know, in general being voted upon or approved here tonight, or they'll all be coming in front of us individually?
So it's the contracts that will come in front of us for each individual hard project? We're basically approving the boxes, right? The economic recovery opportunities, the education, the street and business corridors, just those allocations.
Okay. And it was told to us that if anything, if there was anything left over, or some projects fell through, we reallocate some of those funds to other projects.
Yes, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question?
On the question, I also wanted to add that, as it was explained to us, this is a living document, and it's, you know, it's an overarching plan, and so we have an idea of what everything will be going towards. However, there may be some costs that fluctuate, especially with construction, and that could take away from some projects or add to others. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunneham?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, file to council number 9, 2022.
This piece of legislation is the updated zoning ordinance. It is still tabled to allow for additional input and any amendments. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.